Commission, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Here.
Commissioner Samansky.
Here.
Commissioner Humberto.
Here.
Commissioner Weiner. Commissioner McBride.
Here.
Commissioner Yoder.
Here.
Chair Whitlam.
Here, thank you. Elections of officers, it's the annual election, so we will be nominating, voting for chair and co-chairs, vice chair, secretary in recordings. So we'll turn it over to staff.
So are there any nominations for chair?
I nominate Mark for chair.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? All right.
Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Mark.
Commissioner Samansky.
Mark Whitlam.
Commissioner Weiner. Commissioner Humberto. Commissioner Ride.
Mark.
Commissioner Yoder.
Mark.
Chair Whitlam.
Mark. Thank you. Dog with a lisp. And I will be voting on the vice chair, so this comes back to me, correct? And I'll take nominations for vice chair.
We nominate Bob.
I'll second.
Any other nominations for Bob? Bob Slawinski is one. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? None, okay? And...
Second.
Second, okay? And take roll.
Commissioner Samansky.
Bob.
Commissioner Weiner.
Bob.
Commissioner Humberto.
Bob.
Commissioner McBride.
Bob.
Commissioner Yoder.
Bob.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Bob.
Chair Whitlam.
Bob. Congratulations. Be a little extra in your pay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll be taking nominations. Secretary? And Marlene Secretary. Is there any nominations for secretary?
I was just saying Marlene is the current.
Yes. Marlene is the current. You want to do it again?
I don't care.
Marlene then, okay, or whoever.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay. Marlene is the first nomination. Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? No. And second in, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Marlene.
Commissioner Samansky.
Marlene.
Commissioner Weiner.
Marlene.
Commissioner Humberto.
Marlene.
Commissioner Yoder.
Marlene.
Commissioner McBride.
Me.
Chair Whitlam.
Marlene, thank you, congratulations. And now with the recording secretary, I believe that's just my, is that my appointment? Or do we go through the nominations?
Unless you want to get wild.
Okay.
I nominate Old Faithful over here.
Old Faithful?
What's Old Faithful's name though?
She does such a good job, would like to keep.
You'd like to keep her?
So nominations for Nancy Baker?
Yeah.
Any second?
I'll second her.
Second from Roger?
I go one.
And please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Nancy.
Commissioner Samansky.
Nancy.
Commissioner Weiner.
Nancy.
Commissioner Humberto.
Nancy.
Commissioner McBride.
Nancy.
Commissioner Yoder.
Nancy.
Chair Whitlam.
Nancy. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Nancy.
She shakes her head.
I'm sorry.
No.
You're the one and only.
Yes. She is.
All right, approval agenda, at this time the planning commission can take action to approve the January 6, 2022 agenda, motion.
I'll make that motion.
I make second.
Second.
I'll second her.
Shelley.
Roger. Any now, or any discussion? None, please take roll.
Yeah.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner.
Yes.
Commissioner McBride.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Commissioner Humberto. Chair Whitlam.
Yes, thank you. This time conflicts of interest, just go out and ask any member if there's any conflicts with what's on the agenda tonight. Bob?
Nope.
Pam? Shelley? Marlene?
No.
Roger?
No.
Okay. No, and myself, none.
Say Marco?
Yes, sir.
That's another one, conflict of interest.
Yes. Well, we had that a few times in the past, yeah.
Okay.
Last year.
Go ahead.
Okay. Approval minutes, this time the planning commission can approve the December 2, 2021 meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
We'll make a motion to approve the December 2 meeting minutes.
Motion by Shelley, second.
I'll second.
Pam, discussions? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner.
Yes.
Commissioner Humberto.
Yes.
Commissioner McBride.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yoder.
Chair Whitlam.
Thank you. Correspondence?
No correspondence at this time.
Okay, thank you. Public hearings, we have two, 1260 Cornell and 141 Washington Street. So, now we open? Okay, and we will open public hearing on 1260 Cornell.
Can you state the time?
All the time is 7:08 PM.
Thank you.
Welcome. So, is there applicant? Please come to the podium.
My name is Melanie Newman, I am the owner of Miss Melanie's Daycare, and I am just requesting to have six additional children to what I have now. With all of the daycares closing, I'm getting multiple calls, and I just need to open up more room.
How many do you have now?
I have six.
And you want to move to 12?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have assistants?
I do have an assistant, yes, and my husband is also going to work with me until he figures something else out.
And you're state licensed?
I am state licensed, yes.
Okay. Knocks that question off.
And I still have a CDA, so we have like a curriculum, we're not just like a free-for-all, we have structure.
So you're in my neck of the woods. I'm on 10th, so you're just up the street a little bit.
What are the ages of the current children you have?
I have two up to eight.
Two up to eight, and I assume there's a limitation on under a certain age, or?
Nope, I'm open to having newborns.
Okay.
Whatever is needed, I'm there for.
I know since the casino closed, there was really a scramble to...
I have four of their children, yes.
So there is definitely a need in Manistee.
Yes.
For daycare.
Is 24/7?
I was hoping to maybe do a 24/7 daycare, but I don't know if my body and mind can do 24/7, so we'll just stick to the hours of operation now, and maybe I can address it later.
So is that 8 to 5, or 7?
It is from 7:30 to 5:30.
Okay.
Okay, 7:30, 5:30, all right.
I could round up two more for...
I saw them today that you have plenty you could hand over.
And what do we have for response for the neighbors?
Is there, yeah, any correspondence?
I didn't, I didn't get any correspondence on either of these public hearings.
Do the, do the neighbors know what you're planning? I mean, it's just you and I talking, do they know you're putting up, or they have one, right?
I, I do, I run a daycare now, I have a big sign out there, I'm, they all love to see the kids playing, and I mean, I decorate for every holiday, so...
Yeah, oh, okay.
And, and part of getting on tonight's agenda, I had to send out a 300-foot mailing to everybody within there, so...
Right, right.
They got the mail, so...
So nobody got a...
No, okay.
Everybody in, within 300 feet.
All righty, well, that's good. Yeah, we definitely need it, okay.
Thank you, Marco. Okay. Bob, you have any questions?
Nope.
Nick?
You know, I've worked with childcare centers for many years with the military, and I just have to say that it is truly a calling to be able to do what you do, so I applaud back you picking up the slack in the community, so it is very, very needed, and like I said, quality daycare is very and very important, so...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Pam?
I agree with Mick, it's needed in this area, I worked in a daycare in college, and God bless you.
Thank you. My boys have given me lots of patients for everybody else's children, so...
Shelley?
I have seven children of my own, so I appreciate you running that.
You have a daycare?
I do. And a full-time job to get away from the daycare.
Do you have a daycare, Shelley?
No.
She has a circus.
Yes.
As, I'm going to be 80 in February, I had a grandson, wife, three kids, and a dog move in with me, so it takes a special person. You're old and you're used to being by yourself. So I, God bless you, and I wish you all the best luck.
Thank you.
Roger?
Oh, no, I agree, yeah, I agree it's needed, I wish her all the luck, and she's a special person.
I, I agree, I agree with everyone's sentiments here that...
Yeah, I think...
Much more patients than I do.
Yeah, good idea.
I'd have to jump out my basement window. But thank you.
Thank you. Can I go sit down?
You can. Any, anything from staff?
Just the site planning committee had, had no comments on this project.
Okay. And we will close...
No, 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 no.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
Public comment?
No, public comment.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Okay, so...
Nope.
Do we have to do 141 before we go to?
I would do this one.
Yeah.
And do it in this hearing.
Okay. Okay. So is there any public comment on...
Yes.
35 Cornell Street, I live across from these young people who are having the daycare. They're running it pretty good, they keep the kids always, I don't hear them at all, so it's been nice, traffic hasn't been bad, a lot of people thought there would be more traffic, we don't know until it happens, but right for now, it's been, been a good organization. I checked with some of the neighbors, I'm sorry they didn't get back to everybody, but they didn't feel anything was bad, so I think you got an easy road here on this one. So, I just wanted to express an opinion.
Thank you. Thank you. You don't have to sign the podium.
I'm following the rules here.
He put a letter X there.
Yeah.
Roger will get mad at me.
I've got an eye on you, kiddo.
All right.
We're going to put some more storage units in too, we didn't tell you that.
You always got to wrestle up the natives.
What I, what are you going to say?
Yep, they will pot stir you.
What are you going to say?
All right, so we can get to close...
I'd close this one and then open the next, yeah.
We will close 1260 Cornell Street.
With the time?
Open. Time, sorry. 7:15 and 30 seconds.
Thank you.
And we will open 141 Washington Street. At 7:15.
Good evening, my name is Cody Newman, I'm the architect with Driven Design, we're an architecture firm out of Battle Creek, Michigan. We have the owner, Kevin Schaefer, here tonight as well, if there's additional questions. I'm here just to discuss the project as a whole. This is a renovation of 141 Washington. It's currently an existing building that's vacant, two-story building, brick and wood framing. What we're proposing to do with this project is to add 15 one-bedroom apartments, there'd be 10 on the second floor, and then five on the back of the first floor, so that'd be furthest from Washington Street, leaving the front side there for a commercial tenant. At this time, we're looking to have a grocery or a market, like a small market of some sort on the first floor, but it's, it's unknown, there's no tenant, it could be a restaurant, it could be a variety of things, commercial for that use. What we're doing with the site is, right now, there's currently a gravel lot, it's not striped or anything formal, it's just kind of a gravel lot directly to the south of the building, and then to the east of the building is grass in between the back of the building and the parking lot, there's a few access doors from the first floor out back area. What we're proposing on the east side, we'd have an eight-foot kind of patio for those individual units, there'd be a divider in between each one of the five units, so there'd be a patio there, a few steps down, and then there'd be parallel parking, that would provide 10 spaces there, that would be for the residence parking, and then there's an additional, there's a total of 26 parking spaces on the lot. The goal with the lot is it'd be mostly residence parking and like staff for the commercial tenant at that point, street parking would be used for if it was a market or restaurant, anything. The market would be nice, just because a lot of those people, being like a boutique market, they'd be in and out, they're not there for hours at a time, you know, you'd stop, you'd grab kind of the few things you need and head out from there. On the south side of the building, we're also adding an elevator, that's what you see, that kind of back portion there. The historic district commission recommended doing a mural on that, we're going for federal historic tax credits, if that would be allowed, there'd be a mural on that of some sort, a piece of artwork, if not, it'll be a masonry structure, just darker in color, but ultimately similar to the building character itself. We did receive historic district commission approval last night for the historic aspects of it, we're renovating the building, as mentioned, we are doing the federal historic tax credit, so it has to meet the state and federal guidelines as part of this project. And we also have added, there'll be a new dumpster enclosure on the site, right now it's supposed to hold two trash containers, one for recycling, one for trash, if there's a restaurant, it'd be expanded to add a grease area as well, but at this time, there's just the plans for the two. And then there'll be a series of trees on the south and on the east side, providing a buffer between the residential area and this commercial property. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. How about, do you start?
Everything I looked at in the plans before looked pretty good, but have you thought about any kind of storage for the apartment people at all, like anything in the basement or something?
Yep, the elevator will extend down to the basement, and that was the plan for the basement, it'd be storage for the commercial tenant on the first floor, and then it also, we'd put some fencing down there, so that if people had bikes, kayaks, anything larger, they could store items down there.
I also noticed there, there's always laundry facilities on the first floor, nothing on the second?
Uh, that, there are laundry in every single unit.
Okay, did this show up on the plans too?
It's, it's the box that if you are looking at the plans, so like if you are looking at floor plan sheet, it is directly north of the... Let's see here. Each one of these boxes right here that you see, that is a washer dryer, right next to the water heater and furnace.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So, there'll be eight... Washer dryer in every single unit.
Are these planning to be market rate apartments?
Yes.
Long-term lease?
Ideally.
Okay. That would be one.
If I might ask, what would, what is market rate per se, could a $1,000 a month, or?
That's our target initially.
It's a, it's a game?
Yeah, 1,000 per month is, is our target market to start.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right, all right, okay. All right, that's a little high end, but, all right, yeah.
Will you have an onsite manager, or somebody in charge?
Not onsite, the tenant amount, it wouldn't justify putting a personnel on site.
Sir, could you come podium?
It's okay, thank you.
Yeah, so onsite management is tough with only 15 residential tenants, it's, you can't justify the cost, but it would be management, local management, it'll be determined.
Have you done a study, I assume, this didn't just come up all of a sudden, you must have looked around to see the potential that this building had for 15 units?
Yes, yeah, working with Cody and working with other people around here to determine what the best layout would be.
Okay. And apartment, 15 apartments, yeah. Yeah, that'd be probably a nice piece of change here.
What's the approximate square footage for each?
600 approximately?
Yes, that is correct. Yep, plus or minus, average.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Are you, will some of the apartments be handicap?
Accessible on the main level is the plan, five on the back of the...
There's a ramp on either end, because it's, the building, the first floor currently sits higher than the property is, and to raise the property up creates a big stormwater problem for everyone around there, so we're going to keep that where it is. So where the eight-foot patio is, there'll be two steps down at six inches each, the parking lot would be a foot lower than the back there, and then on either end, there's a ramp, so anyone ADA would be able to get up onto that and into their unit.
So you'll have a couple, couple handicap units on?
Yep. And technically, the second floor would be two really, because there's an elevator.
Elevator, yeah, okay.
So in this case, every unit could be ADA compliant.
For the retail portion, are you looking for one tenant, or is it two units for the retail?
I prefer one, yeah, I think that would be nice.
It's about 2,400 square feet on the first floor there, so we're looking...
Really, oh, that entire storefront's only 2,400?
So there's only half, half the building, they cut off?
Sorry, it's 3,800. Yep, so that's the front side.
But it, but it could be up to five, is that correct?
That's correct.
Coffee shop would be nice?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A little grocery store like you're talking would be nice, though.
Have you given any thought to having a pharmacy, because the north side is pharmacy poor?
I'd be open to that, if you have a good recommendation, circle.
I mean, that's something...
It would be needed in that area.
Even, even the pharmacy, because of the new rules, you wouldn't actually even have to have a pharmacist on present, you could collaborate with one of the existing pharmacies to have a walk-in, a walk-in pharmacy.
Yeah.
That also improves the whole walkability score for the city of Manistee if we had that.
Okay.
And also with the senior center in a way, that'd be more of a convenience for the seniors that, that way.
I'm on the board at the senior center, and we're looking for housing for seniors, plus walkability or easy access, and the drugstore's one of the top things that that area has none, and that they have to go all the way south of town, and I think that would be a good, if that could happen, would be a good asset for that area.
Sure. And you're long, you're going to have long and short-term rentals, do you know how many of each?
Primarily, we're looking for at least a year-long lease with the residential tenants. Longer is obviously better, but, you know, we can't, until we figure out how the project goes and lease it.
Right, right, right.
Manistee's a really good short-term rental town, that's not my intent for this project, but I, I don't want to promise that that's not going to happen ever, but it's easier, it's much more management-friendly to have long-term VCs in there.
We would like to see long-term.
And it's really whether community, especially market rate, and, again, I think you're going to find that there's a lot of 55-year-old and older who might be very interested in something like this, so...
Chair, if I may?
Sure.
If short-term rentals were, ended up being a goal, would there be a difference in the number of units, would you be combining some, things like that, is that, that's not on the table at all? Okay, thank you.
What's your, sorry, what's your projected completion date?
That's tough, things like this take time, this is really our first step, Cody's working on finishing construction documents, from there, we go out to bid, this is something where we're going to be utilizing state and federal incentives, so a lot of that is out of our hands, as far as how long that takes, the fastest that it takes is probably eight months to get through that process before construction starts, so it, it just takes, obviously as fast as possible, we don't have any intention to drag our feet into...
So a minimum of sometime in 2023?
Yeah.
And that's if all your grants go through that you're applying for, correct? Because we've had units come in and the grants didn't go that they were planning on, so then they stopped building the units. But are you going through what, historical overlay and a couple other different agencies for grants?
Yeah, yes. If, is the, your question, I'm sorry, is it if the grants don't come through, what happens to the project?
Right.
It's really difficult to complete a project like this without the help of the...
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, the construction costs these days are astronomical, the cost of the building, it would far exceed the value of the building. And, so, we're hopeful, this is the incentivized area, and, and the state and the federal invest in this area for projects just like this.
Yeah, I see, you're about the third one that tried and didn't happen for us, but good luck, yeah, it's a good use for it, so...
Zach, you have something?
Were there any local tax incentives you guys were seeking?
Oprah.
Besides the Oprah?
So it's just the Oprah?
So far.
Okay. Just, just curious, thank you.
You're not affiliated with HUD trying to get low income or anything like that, these will strictly be rental?
Yeah, strictly, strictly market rate.
This is just a basic rendering, it's not the real design or anything of it?
Uh, the exterior, that is what it would look like.
Is there any chance of maybe adding some kind of an awning along the front of it to kind of keep it with the original?
So... We, we are working on replicating it to the late 1890s, so there was a historic photo that we have, that we are working on replicating it to, yep, so that on there.
Yeah, that was the photo I was talking about.
Yep. So we wouldn't like the fold-out awnings, that was actually a very short period of time, we, we...
That's not what I was talking about, I was talking about the oldest, the older photo.
Yep, yep, so we're planning on making it, like the historic piece there.
And the lighting in the parking lot that would, that would, you know, we're kind of going for the night sky thing that would be...
Yep, all lighting is down, and we did provide a photometric, it doesn't seep onto the neighboring properties. So all lighting is contained onsite there.
Now, is the, the trees, is that just a rendering, or do you plan on having just the canopy of pine trees?
We would do a variety of conifer trees, the reason we do conifers is just because The reason we do conifers is just because of the privacy year-round. Obviously, you guys don't have as long of a summer period here, so that's what we do. But we wouldn't, they wouldn't all be, like right now, those are just frasier firs. It'd be, you know, there'd be a variety of the different conifer trees there along the line.
And you'd keep the green space between the building and the road around the perimeter, the front and side, north side? Your drawing shows.
Well, currently.
Yeah, correct, so that would be cement on the street side there.
It's an old building.
How is the fire suppression going to be put in? What type of fire suppression do you have?
It'll be fully suppressed.
Entire building, basement through.
Water or chemical?
Water.
So it'll be a wet system as opposed to a dry.
Correct.
Now, I looked in your plans on the basement, you're going to have to excavate the basement, correct? Before you put in a new floor? Because if I remember correctly, it's only like five foot.
No, the basement's actually more like eight feet, but it's sink. So it needs to be leveled and compacted and then poured. There's only one, like right now, it's five separate basements matching up to levels above. One of the very north end one is concrete, the rest of those are sand at this time. Never a floor poured in there.
Yeah. That's an old building too.
Do you have some signage on the north and south sides with lights? Ever thought about having it painted on the wall?
So you could have it like as a plywood piece added to it. We're removing all the paint off of the brick as part of this project to restore the building. Painting brick, as you can see over years, it creates, traps the moisture in and it eats the face of the brick. So what we're doing is trying to strip that back to the original. So the sign would be like a plywood sign that'd be, it could be painted on top of that and then obviously replaced throughout the years or changed or painted over.
I always thought it was cool to have painted signs on the buildings. Number of, like any other place in, in the country had painted signs on those awesome.
I do like the idea of the mural on the side. It's something that the city's been looking at, so you might be one of the first to be able to do that, so.
I'd like to do that.
Yeah.
If the state allows it with their historic.
And it truly is, it's a very interesting building and it's, you know.
Yeah.
Again, had, had many lives over the years.
Yeah, many lives, many lives to come.
I do like the, your dumpster that has eight-foot walls. I like that, little, little mark in the paper, people can't climb up, so kudos on that. Any other questions? Sure, go ahead, Marlene.
With digging up in the basement and scraping of the paint, has browns, have you done anything with the browns filled? Having all that tested, has that been submitted?
No, not yet, no.
You don't want to open that can of worms.
I do too.
You don't. Force them in over the sand and we'll move ahead.
Wife's uncle used to run the bakery on, on the north end, so.
Awesome.
My uncle ran the bakery on the north end.
Yours did too?
Yep, on the north end, yeah, a bakery shop there.
Right, Yoder's Bakery, right?
No, Junie Kaczynski. He used to be a bread man, back when I did, he used to deliver bread, yeah, and then he turned into, yeah.
Before my time.
Yeah, that was back in the thirties and twenties.
I don't remember that.
I remember going there as a kid.
Well, it looks like a very nice project and I'm happy, so happy to see something take over that building and this looks like a very good project.
You're about the fourth or fifth personal that took a hands-on this building. Hopefully it'll work through with you, but we've had several people come in with, had big plans, but.
But your designs look so open and nice.
Yeah. Good luck, yeah.
I think you've, I think you got the right to connect this time, I think so.
Yeah.
I hope so.
We're confident that you've got a good plan to go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Chair, Chair, one more. If you were to have a restaurant in there of some sort, how would you go about the grease trap? In, in association with the dumpster enclosure?
We mentioned that earlier on, it would expand to accommodate that in the dumpster enclosure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Have to do what you gotta do.
Best of luck.
Yeah, good luck, guys. If you don't mind, where, where were you out of? Grand Rapids, you said?
Kalamazoo.
Kalamazoo?
I'm in the Lansing area.
And I'm in the Battle Creek area.
Oh, thank you for that, that helps me. Let's say Grand Rapids.
Okay, all right. Staff, you have public comment? But I don't have anything other than a site plan review memo here, if you want me to go over that, I can do that. Okay. So there was comments here from the fire department and then DPW and engineering. And I'm not sure if you guys want me to read, read through all these. I'll just kind of highlight them unless you guys really want to hear me read it, like we can pretend it's the old days. Okay.
Hit the high points.
So the fire department wants a third-party review of the suppression system. That's, that's pretty common, they've done that in the past. Uh, they, they just wanted to verify that the elevator would be able to fit a stretcher. That was, that was a concern that they brought up to me on the phone. DPW wants to review construction plans, that's another boilerplate one. Stormwater in Washington, Washington Street will have adequate depth and adequate size for the outlet. I think that's a, that's a good thing to know that they didn't have any concerns about that. And, yeah, so that's what I've got. If you guys really want to get into details, I'm happy to, but I think those are just kind of the highlights.
And we'll leave it up to everyone. You good?
Yeah.
Okay, Mark. All right, and public comment? If there's anyone with a comment on 141 Washington Street, please come to the podium, name and address. You have up to three minutes. So anyone in the audience, anyone?
Hi, don't you decide next to?
Whatever you want to do, go ahead.
My name is Kate Barrage and I live at 140 Jefferson Street. And first of all, I'm excited about the prospect. But I'm also a little bit curious, you know, we just moved up here to the area within the past few years and now with the lead in the water and other issues like that, I'm, you know, just wondering what precautions you're going to take to prevent any kind of, you know, lead or asbestos or all the other things that a young, you know, mother needs to be concerned about her children.
Okay, ma'am, you have to address the commission.
Oh, 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 okay, sorry, this is my first time.
Understood.
I'm just wondering what are, what I guess then the regulations are for a project? Like if they're going to be scraping paint and it's a windy day, you know, do they need to like tent it? Or, you know, just something, how do we feel safe in our community knowing we're not making a bigger risk?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm sure with the regulations that they have to put up, but they can only do certain things under certain times.
Okay.
I mean, to meet the regulations that they, that they're under.
Yeah.
But I mean, as far as any environmental discharge, yeah, they, I, I don't know. Jack?
I'd go on with public comment and then if you would like to ask the applicants, I know they have a very good answer to that.
Yeah.
Um, I think that was everything, hold on. I had a whole list.
Oh.
All right, well, I guess everything else would just be for them, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Before you close it, if you wanted to, to ask them that question, it might be a good time.
So if you come to the podium again, please.
And behave.
So we do have to follow all the city, state and federal guidelines for removing asbestos, lead, all of those. So anything that's happened on the outside, the outside isn't being sandblasted or anything, that's actually really harmful to the brick as well. So it's done with a process, it's peel-away, you can get it at Sherwin-Williams, almost anywhere. It's like a five-gallon bucket, it's a paste that goes over the building, there's a film that goes over that. And then that works its magic, absorbs it all and then rips it off. So, and all of that would be contained in there, so it's not floating through the neighborhood or anywhere else.
How's that, how's that captured?
So it cap, it's a paste, so it actually, like when you peel it off, it pulls the paint off with it and then it's captured and then that just gets disposed of in any trash.
So you work sections, the whole building, how do, how do they do?
Uh, yes, it's very large, so because of the scale of this, it'd probably be like one, well, north and south end would probably be like a day in itself and then it'd probably be a couple-day process working down the east and west facades.
Those are, how do you, I mean, again, capturing the, the materials, buckets, you have drop cloths, how do, how is it?
It'll be enclosed, screened in at that point, scaffolding, then enclosed.
And they'll probably get a big copper over there and they'll just drop a bit of big copper from, from, no.
But if that has lead paint and stuff in it, asbestos, and you said that just goes into a landfill, you don't have to have abatement?
There is an abatement process for it. Essentially, the landfill has a, a special place for where that goes. It all ends up at the same place there, they just have a place where the abatement goes.
So you can use that same process even if lead is detected in the exterior paint?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
It's because nobody's really touching it, you put this glue on and then.
I've seen the process done, I didn't realize you could dispose of it the same.
You keep it enclosed is what it is, you encapsulate it in that glue and then you peel it off.
Correct, as long as it's enclosed, so if it's in bags, but in some sort of way, it can be put in a dumpster and taken up at that point.
So it'll probably be the same way inside then, using the paste?
Correct, well, for removing paint from brick, asbestos has to be bagged up and removed in that fashion. All the stuff is not harmful until it's disruptive, obviously. And so now that it's being disrupted as part of the removal process is when you have to bag it, make sure everyone's wearing hazmat suits, the OSHA guidelines put out by the state, remove from there.
Chair?
Yes.
We have Katie Mel here with us and she's actually pretty well-versed in this and we're lucky enough that she joined us tonight. So I think she, she could help a little bit.
Well, I think that you've covered it pretty well, but I would just like to add that, I mean, I worked under federal grants in Genesee County and we did do a lot of abatement with lead testing or with lead paint, obviously with rehabbing old homes in the Flint area. So I would just add that the companies and contractors that you hire to do these things are definitely, you know, very well-versed in the process. So, I mean, you've explained it very well, I would say, but just to add to that, that whoever's hired to do it will, will definitely.
And they have to be licensed to do those specifically.
Yeah, be hired to do that specific job.
We can't hire anyone to remove that, they have to be certified.
Yeah, that's true of each company, I hear, yeah. All right.
Oh, yeah, the interior.
Yeah. Oh, we have one other question.
What happened?
On the plumbing, that building more than likely has galvanized pipe in it.
Correct, everything is getting removed and everything's new as part of this project. So all new mechanical, electrical plumbing. So it'll be a new electrical service, new water line, because the one that's in there is not adequately sized for what we want to do. Everything will be new in the building and all the old will be disposed of.
I don't even think you can use galvanized piping anymore, can you?
I don't think so.
Everything's got to be, yeah.
Thank you. And water, Zach, the water is, is sufficient that DPW?
Yeah, DPW and engineering didn't have any concerns with wat, stormwater runoff, sanitary sewer or anything like that. They, they looked like it was buttoned up on their end.
Didn't we just put a new line down Washington Street a couple of years back?
I think that's how they knew.
Oh. That's how they knew.
All right.
All right, very good.
Chair, I, I think it would be appropriate to ask public comment one more time before you close the hearing.
Is there any other public comment now that other things have come to light? Any, any comments? None? Okay. Close public hearing for 141 Washington Street?
At the time?
Time is seven forty-five. Public comment on agenda-related items, if anyone in the audience that would have a comment on any agenda-related items, please come to the podium. You will have the three minutes. Anyone? None? Okay. Move on to new business, 1260 Cornell Street.
Make a motion to approve a request.
Okay, motion by Rogers, second by Marlene, any discussion on this? Please take rule.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Simonski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Memberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitworth?
Yes. Motion approved, congratulations. Next, 141 Washington Street.
I make a motion to approve the petition for the Washington Street project.
Zach, you have something?
I, I was gonna invite the commission that if, if they were going to approve and if there were any stipulations that we would do like we have in the past and do a, do a master stipulation list. That way it just really helps Nancy and I down the road and we're doing the paperwork, so.
Motion, is there any stipulations?
Not that I can see, go.
I didn't see anything that they forgot.
Were there ready from the departments that had to be checked, like DPW or fire or police? Did they have any suggestions that we might not think about?
I think it would be safe to, any of this site plan review comments be stipulations. I would also recommend putting a timeline on it. You know, whatever you guys feel is appropriate, I know the historic district commission gave them two years. There's always the option to extend, but I think, I think it's, it's appropriate that we put timelines on, on things like this, so.
So I'll amend my motion to approve with the stipulations from the city review as well as a two-year, the site plan review comments and then a two-year to match the historic district requirement.
Is that what the historic gave, two years?
Two years.
I'll second.
Yeah, I'd second that, sure.
All right.
Third is or whatever.
Your third, Raj?
Those stipulations, could you reread those, please?
I'll, I'll read the list here for you, how about that? I've been just itching to. So from the, from the fire department, a third-party review of, of the suppression system is needed. A third-party review of the fire alarm system is needed. FDC location and specifications to be approved by the fire department. Fire hydrant to be located within a hundred feet of the FDC. Knox box to be installed. There's only, there's one in place already, but new keys will need to be provided for the building to be placed inside the existing exit. Two-hour, two-hour separation is needed between the mercantile and the residential. Is the fire escape ladder on the north side being removed was, was a question they had, I guess. Elevator to be sized so that EMS stretcher can fit inside without collapsing.
Yeah, that's true.
From city engineer and DPW, preliminary plans. We'll, we'll need to review construction plans when complete, traffic and parking using existing curb cuts. We need detailed grading plan with construction plans. Stormwater, we will need stormwater details, detention details and calculations with construction plans. Need to show grading on construction drawings, verify no stormwater runoff is, is going onto neighbor, neighboring properties. Storm sewer on Washington will have adequate depth and is adequate size for the outlet. New sanitary lead, potable water leads, fire suppression leads appear to be adequate. Required fire flow demands should be provided by architect slash engineer with construction plans. The storm tie-in on Washington will need to occur with an existing or a new manhole structure.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
I know they're going to have the elevator to get up and down to the second floor, but is there adequate stairwells in case of fire that that elevator isn't working that people can evacuate from upstairs?
Is that directed at me? Okay. It, it looked adequate to me. Fire department didn't seem to have any issues that, from the conversations I'd had with them since, since this, I mean. Site plan review met over a month ago at this point. So I just continue to look at it and, and I think a lot of things get buttoned up, but these are the, those are the concerns. But that is not one I've heard, so I hope, does that answer your question, Marlene?
Yeah, thank you.
Satisfied, Marlene?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So is everyone good with the stipulations?
Uh-huh.
And we've had a motion and a second?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
Please take rule.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Simonski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Humberto? Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Zoning Board of Appeals Chair, Mr. Glenn Zering, please come to the podium.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Glenn Zering, 325th, or 321-Fifth, I sold 325. I am the chair for the Zoning Board of Appeals for the city. I also am on the planning commission for Manistee County. And first, I want to just say I'm very glad we now have a full board on the Zoning Board of Appeals. And it's nice to have a full group there to do what we do, which isn't too often, but it's fairly important when we have to. Keep in mind that the Zoning Board of Appeals is the only prejudicial body in city government. So we have to act like a court. Because if something that we're doing is disputed, it goes up to circuit court. So we have to work with ordinances, we have to work with the rules as they are written. Not like we would like to interpret them, but as they are written. And I have driven our lovely staff here up the wall with, trying to clarify some of the issues which have come before us and particularly a recent hearing. And what we've discovered is that there are vagaries and there are some cases where in the ordinances that we are trying to uphold, that they actually compete and negate each other. And this also goes into when we're doing the variances to the questions that we are asking, how they are written. And I was surprised to find out that some of the questions that we have to use were actually dictated by the Supreme Court. But in their wisdom, they said, "Well, you have to ask this, but you all just write it like you want to." That proved interesting. And I have to admit, I studied a lot of language and English over the years and I find some things which would really bother me. But what I'm thinking here, and this is basically more just of a bit of information for you as our planning commission. We're going to start trying to identify some of these areas where there are discrepancies and things might be fighting each other within ordinances or between ordinances. We're going to identify those. And the reason we want to do that is, as a planning commission, it is up to you to come up with any changes, which then, of course, goes to the city council. And we want to make things easier to understand and easier for people to follow. You know, if I were someone who was building a business and trying to apply to do something, first, I have way too many units of government to go through. And second, when I look at the rules, some of it doesn't make sense. So if anything, this is a personal thing on my part. I want to try and simplify this stuff to make it a little bit easier. So I think you can expect us to bring some things forward to you. And I'm also very pleased, the members we have on the board now, I've gotten some excellent input from them and it's just, it's a pleasure to work with them. But I just want to let you know, we want to get this cleared up, cleaned up, and make a good effort so it's easier for all of our citizens and outsiders who would like to work here in Manistee.
Stop giving Zach headaches. Stop giving Zach headaches.
Yep. So anyway, that was it. I don't know if there were any questions. This was more of just informative of our goals.
Any questions?
No.
I, no, I have one. How soon do you think you can start sending things to us and we get things cleared up a lot quicker?
I'm honestly not sure. We are having our organizational meeting, I believe that's next week? Or two weeks? With the ZBA.
It's been a long week, Glenn, I can tell you that, I'm sorry.
It's coming up shortly, so we get through that. And then we already have been working amongst the members, including a couple of new members, who are doing some excellent research into it. We're also going back to some of the folks, Kurt Schindler, who's been a planner for years and knows more about it than we ever will. So we're already gathering the information. So now what I want to do is to simplify and come to you and say, "Okay, in this ordinance, this is a problem. Here are some possible solutions for you to consider." So I don't want to just throw it at you. I would like to be able to narrow that down and make it easier to work with.
Glenn, who are the members?
Shelley? Yeah. Dennis Johnson, Dwayne...
Jones.
Jones, John Veitch.
Linda Siler.
Linda Siler.
Yeah. Who else? Six.
She's got me.
Yeah, six.
Yeah, six.
But we have three new members, so that's, it's interesting to get some new input. I've also approached the city manager. We have training available for Zoning Board of Appeals members. As provided Mary Riley, who's done much of our training, is available for that. And I have approached our city manager begging for the funding from the city council to run us all through some ZBA training. And it's all coming from the same area of information and interest.
I started off 20 years ago on ZBA.
I know you did, yeah.
Well, I've been on a planning commission for 37 years and I don't recall you or the ZBA ever coming forward to question what the planning commission has done or scheduled to do. And we have, as I recall, on a yearly basis, when Denise and John and the back were here, we used to check what went on with the ZBA to see if we could correct whatever problems that we were having that year. So we have looked into it from a planning perspective of it and I certainly hope that we go by the rules that we have as the ZBA and the planning commission.
I totally agree, Roger. I've only been on it five years, four years, something like that. And I've only been chair one year or so. So I was very new when I first got on it. I didn't even know the right questions to ask. So I, I'm not gonna say we didn't take advantage of it, but we're going to now.
Well, let's hope we work together.
Oh heavens, yes.
Without the opposition of, well, like you say, the idea of the problem we have is we're reading an ordinance and it's the interpretation
Right.
between three people, two people, one person. So that's what we have to get down. Because only one person can interpret the way it should be and it's the lawyer as far as we're concerned, because it's gotta go through the courts.
Well, it does have to go through the courts, so we just need to do it properly. So I'm in total agreement.
Yeah, I think we have, brought it in the right way. I think you got a good idea.
I like the part where you're tapping into Kurt's knowledge.
Oh, yeah.
I've known Kurt many, many years and that man is, I've known him, I want to say, since the late 70s, early 80s.
Okay.
And when he was the county planner. And I worked on the surveying end all the time and that man is very knowledgeable.
He is, yep. We have some other good sources, too. I think MSU's done a great job with some of the information they're pulling together. So we've got the right sources. I just think now, let's focus on actually accomplishing something with them.
I'm glad to see you have a full board. I know for a long time you didn't.
Oh, so am I, yes.
Add three or four members and it's just very, very hard.
Okay. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Chair, before we finish that up, Katie has a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment to what you had said, Roger, because I understand the sentiment and obviously the lawyers are the ones who take things beyond and, you know, we should all be on the same page as the lawyers. But at the same token, your zoning administrators are the ones who are handling the day-to-day. And your residents should be able to interpret the ordinance as well. So I think it's a fine line between, you know, the lawyer having the ordinance written how it should be, but also having it written in a way that your zoning administrators and, excuse me, sorry, residents can interpret that as well. So I just wanted to add that, that comment.
What we need to play in language is what we need.
Well, that's the way we tried to make it, as I understood it back in the day, as simple as possible so we could all understand it.
Right.
So I mean, if we, if we're not making it that simple, I mean, I don't know. Either we're too smart or...
If I may, Roger. Having worked in government for many years, including of all things FEMA, things that we write in government have a tendency to just sort of grow or morph on their own, depending who looks at it, who's in charge of it at that time. Sometimes it grows, just like any bureaucratic situation, to a point where it can't accomplish anything other than spend time and pay lawyers.
It's circular.
So I, not that I'm a radical, but I'm just going, we need to get back to, like Bob mentioned, okay, let's keep it simple. And you know, the first question always bothers me on the variance. It has double negatives in one sentence. So when I read it, I'm going, "Okay, what does this really mean?" And if I was the chair of the ZBA, I'm not quite sure and have to work through that. Now, I'm sure that folks coming in who are not familiar with the process have no idea. So I want to make that much more plainly understood for all of us. While staying legal.
Yeah, yeah, understood, yeah, that's a good idea. Stay legal as much as we can.
You said that, not me.
Yeah, lawmakers.
I'd like to thank Katie for making that point. It's one that is generally and frequently lost on government bodies.
Yeah. Well, and I'll say, I mean, even, I administer zoning for three communities, Oneakama Township, Bear Lake Township, and Arcadia Township. And generally, ordinances all kind of have the same groove, the same kind of intent. But then, things can get worded in a way that, yeah, you just kind of get lost in it. And, you know, one sentence can mean the same thing in three different ordinances. And if you can simplify that, it really just makes things easy for everyone. Because, yeah, I mean, residents should be able to pick up the book and decipher what they can and can't do by looking at it. I mean, they might need a little bit of assistance, right. They might need some assistance or need some direction and, you know, what areas to look at. But it shouldn't be, you know, ambiguous or written in a way that the common person can't sit down and, you know, interpret it themselves. And ultimately, yeah, the zoning administrator is the interpreter. They're the one acting on it and, yeah. So I do appreciate your comment. You know, obviously, the lawyers are involved from start to finish, but the boots on the ground definitely are involved, too. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. All right.
All business?
All business.
Mission view sheds.
Mission view sheds, I thought we dealt with that already.
We did, I think, I think the last meeting, we ended off with wanting some language from the city attorney.
Oh.
I've got that in the memo here. I sent it out to you guys and it didn't make it into the packet, but I have it for you tonight. We just didn't get it on time, but happy to discuss anything, you know, his words on it.
Basically, I think, how I read it, he said, "We were fine to say we don't want to address view shed," which is what...
Right, that's what I thought we were...
...agreed to with the last meeting.
Yeah.
And he agreed with that, said, "We don't have to change any language in the ordinance." That not addressing it meets the same criteria.
Right. Go ahead, Charlie.
If I recall correctly, we, there wasn't initial interpretation of that, but it was suggested or recommended that we actually include language establishing protections so that there wouldn't be misinterpretations going forward. Wasn't, wasn't, didn't it go along those lines?
I could add to that if you'd like. I know, and this was before my time working with Oneakama Township, but I believe it was in the recent history, maybe 2017 or 2019, this amendment was enacted for their ordinance. And there was some discrepancies about view being protected and the township had gone through quite, you know, quite some time with certain residents who really wanted their view to be protected. And they determined that within their ordinance, views are not protected, but they did include a provision that states that very specifically under their water protection section in the general provisions. And I believe the exact language is, "Nothing in this ordinance is intended to protect the view shed of adjacent property owners or of back parcel owners." So that just made it crystal clear for anyone moving forward that, you know, nothing here is intended to protect because we know that, you know, zoning is not permissive. But when it's written out very clearly, it makes it so that it's not a question.
You're doubling down.
Right. So changing the ordinance, like you said, Mick, you know, right now, it's fine how it is, but it would only make things more clear to add it. It wouldn't hurt to add something like that.
So by adding what Mike had said, you think it would make it more clear compared to what we have?
Yes, it would just have that written provision so that it's not ever a question if view sheds are protected. And then it eliminates, you know, that whole process, so.
Kind of makes sense. Well, I thought we went through with...
How do we move on this, Zach?
I heard a couple of voices there, I'm sorry.
How do we move on this then, if we so choose to? Mike's comments.
Oh, so...
Including his.
So the commission has the option to potentially adopt some new language there? I mean, we'd still have to go through that, but if that was the view you guys wanted to take, you guys could, you know, just say, "Hey, you know, we're not really interested in that." Or if you guys wanted more information, we can always, we could always table, I guess.
No, I think the recommendation to just clearly say,
Right.
"Nothing in this ordinance," just as Katie said.
Nothing in this ordinance is going to, not going to protect view.
Yes.
Right.
Nothing in this ordinance is intended to protect the view shed of surrounding or back parcel owners. And honestly, how I was saying earlier, that a lot of zoning ordinances kind of all say the same thing, or maybe different words, but trying to say the same thing, just steal it from Oneakama because it's great language and you can just stick it right in there.
Well, I thought we had an issue, wasn't it, a few years back with a deck? People were putting a deck on and the people next door were complaining because the deck is gonna block their view. And we came into this view shed at that point. Didn't we have anything in the books at that point? Because I know we didn't stop the people from building the deck because we didn't have a protection of a view site.
So that was before my time.
Oh, yeah. Come on, Jack.
That's the easy one. But, but, you know, having no knowledge of what exactly happened there, it could have been determinable that wasn't an actual effect on the view. You know, just because it's near you doesn't mean it affects your view. It's not gonna, you know, is it an effect on property value or what?
When you just get, yeah, see out one window, why can't you just walk through the other window to see it?
Organize to your neighbor, go over there.
So it's hard for me to answer that question, only because I wasn't here. I haven't read any...
Yeah, because I know we didn't stop the neighbors and I know the argument was from the planning commission that we weren't, we were not going to stop a person from building a deck because it blocked the neighbor's view.
Well, and as Mick stated at the beginning of this discussion, you know, currently, there's nothing in the ordinance to protect view sheds. So that was probably the consensus at that time, that, you know, there is nothing in the ordinance to protect their view shed.
Right.
But this would just make it that much more clear that there is nothing. So I'm sure that they had the, you know, the argument and the language in the ordinance previously to not protect the view shed. And that's probably why that deck was allowed to go up.
So my suggestion is that we give it to the ZBA to include with the other language requirement and have it all submitted at one time rather than us piecemealing this. Because I think the consensus is, we don't want view.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's just, and according to what we got from Mr. Siler, we don't have to do anything and we don't have view shed. But it wouldn't hurt to have that, that line to clarify. But that kind of fits into what Mr. Zering was just saying, that there's probably other areas and like we've done in the past, where we have a whole list of these are the ordinance that we'd want to change instead of having one go to the city council and then a week later, we have another one-liner go into the city council so we can spend some time to go over several and then package that and then go forward.
Yeah, it just depends if it's a simple change or a complex change and we put enough... Yeah, it just depends if it's a simple change or a complex change and we put the numbers together. Complex, it's going to take a, maybe one
Oh, yeah, that's true.
for one ordinance. But if it's a bunch of simple things, put a bunch of ordinances together.
And we were pretty effective doing that in the past.
Yep. And so just, just to add on to that, um, the, the ZBA, Glenn's intention here, and Glenn, please correct me if I'm wrong, is to kind of provide you guys with some, with some framework language. Because really, it's a planning commission who, who works on that. And then it, you know, it, it's kind of fortified in our department. And the city attorney also helps with that as well, before it goes to city council, before it even comes back to you guys for approval and then to city council. So, well, it's, I, it's not a bad idea to, to do them in groups. At the same time, I'm kind of of the mindset, if we've got something ready to go, I can start working on it. You know, um, I just
I'd kind of like to get this one done and over with.
Okay.
It seems like a simple add.
And, and that, that was my thing, is, is this one's very easy. It's been done. I don't see it taking a lot of time from our office at all. The city attorney, it's, it's not, it's not, we're not creating a new definition.
No, no.
It, it's, it's, it's a whole lot easier than some of the ones in the past where we did group them together. The beginning of last year, I think, was, I think we had five or six go through at once. And, and they were intensive. And that's why it was just easier, like, all right, we're going to just focus on this for a month.
Would it have to then come back before us after the language is modified?
Yeah, yeah. To, to, to change anything in the zoning ordinance, we're going to need a public hearing, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, uh, if, if that's the, the way the commission goes, then, you know, our department will work on it and bring it back and
Do we need a motion on this? Or a straw poll?
Well, what time is it? I'll have to check on the time.
Yeah, I think a motion would be appropriate. Um, I'm, I'm thinking right now. Let's, let's just do that. Let's just, just take a motion and, and work through it that way. I think that's the safest bet.
Okay.
So is there a mo-
I'll make a motion that the lawyer head of the planning department getting the language straightened down a little bit the way we talked tonight and then bring it back to us to approve it.
A second?
Not a second.
Any discussion?
No.
No? Please take a roll.
Commissioner Swinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlow?
Yes, thank you. Public comments and communication, if there's anyone in the public that would like to make a comment, please come to the podium. Name and address, please. You have up to three minutes.
I guess it's my turn. My name's Mike Ball. Live at 190 Quincy Street. And I've got a question for the commission, but first I have to give a little background as to the property I'm talking about. Back in 2018, my wife and I bought a piece of property at 400 Sibon Street, the infamous Candy Mountain and
Oh, okay.
I think it was Sibon Street Bar at one time.
Midway Bar.
And, yeah, and when we bought it, we were planning on just making it a place for family members to come over and stay when they were in the area. Or maybe make it a family gathering place, that sort of thing. So we had no intent to have any commercial interest in the building at all. So we just proceeded for the first couple of years, because the building was in pretty rough shape. We were just kind of cleaning up the interior, trying to get it ready for a full-scale remodel. And come 2021, my wife and I are both retired. So we both have time to work on it now. So I began the process of getting building permits. So we were doing this on the up and up. I went back and forth a couple of times with the first building inspector. His name was Steve Hogan. And he sent me email with the building permit forms. I filled those out. We went back and forth a few times, finally got building permits approved. But they came back as interior remodel slash alteration commercial. And when I questioned him about that, he said, although the building is mixed use or is in a mixed-use zoning, it's still considered commercial. And I said, well, we have no interest in being commercial. So he, when I told him that, well, I think by this time, it was now the second building inspector, Kurt Briggs. He had me talk to Zach. I've met with Zach a couple of times. He suggested I talk to Molly Whitstone, Whitstone?
Whitstone, an assessor.
The assessor and get the property description changed. And I've gone through all that. But still, I can't get a building permit that says residential. And I know if it's not a residential building permit, I'm going to have a lot more hoops to jump through. I want to follow code and I will follow code, but I just need to know what it is. So my, my question for you guys is, what else do I need to do to this property to get it so it is defined as residential, not commercial?
You're the person that my wife was talking to at a restaurant?
Yes.
That was telling me, or were you with her?
Yeah. Kathy and I were
Well, how hard it, well, yes. And I'm glad you're here because, yes, we need to get that straightened out.
What is your plans for that building?
We're going to put a couple bedrooms up on the second floor. Down, and a kitchen and a pantry, a fairly large kitchen. Downstairs, we're going to split the first floor in half. The front's just going to be like an open room with maybe a pool table, jukebox, that sort of thing. A bathroom upstairs and downstairs, obviously. And then a couple of rooms, just like for crafts. My wife, she likes to paint. I've got some collections I work on. It's just going to be just a hangout place mostly. I don't anticipate anybody's going to live there. We've got a place on the north end of town that we stay at. But we just want a place, if a large number of family members want to come over, we can't handle it. But this would be a good place to do it. And it was a, it was a cheap building. The building itself internally isn't surprisingly good shape. The outside looks terrible, but that's the last thing I'm going to fix because I know what happens when I do that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, my
But yeah, that's a good question. I would think, I would direct you, because I was asking who you were, I would direct you to Zach. And I would think you would be able to help him get that changed. Because there isn't anybody from the city that I could, that I could see.
Yeah, this, or, should we ask for other public comment before we keep going? Because I don't want this to take up any of anyone else's time. But
Yeah.
I'm hap- I'm happy to answer, though. I just, I want to make sure everyone gets a turn.
Well, what's the matter now?
I got the key. You're not getting it right.
Yeah, we're a little in the chicken side on for you.
256 Hughes Street, Second District, City Council, Mayor, former real estate agent. I sold the building. Now, in, in 2018, Denise Beardsley, Blakesley?
Blakesley.
Beardsley.
Was zoning person.
Blakesley, go ahead.
Blake.
Blake, Blakesley was our zoning person. And I went to her and I said, I just want to use it, pretty much the way he just described it. And she said, that's fine, because that whole area has, that gone through this master plan change, that whole area in there is now residential. And it's been so long since it was commercial that he doesn't have to make any changes if he wants to keep it as residential. That was all, unfortunately, that was not in writing at all. But that was the message. And it seemed to be, you know, it seemed to be practical. But now, because it formerly was like years and years ago, when Mark was a little boy, maybe.
Thank you.
And Roger.
You know, they remember it as a commercial building. And, and it's somewhat set up that way inside, but it's been deserted and not used as that for so many years. So I, I do think it's more fair that they have that designation.
Yes.
The property. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. And you shouldn't have to go through all this for that. That doesn't make sense.
Any, anyone else before we move on with Mr. Ball? Okay?
So, I've, I've spoken with Mr. Ball about this. I've got no issue, I've got no issue with what he's doing. I, I've made that clear. Molly and I got on the same page. I think even almost the same day. She said she used, oh, yeah, I switched it, no problem. Is, is that right? About, just about the same day?
In September or October that we had done that. And the building that I got was in, I think, November. And I've been trying to, you know, figure out what to do since then.
So you're asking it to be changed like a residential rather than commercial?
Single-family residential, yeah.
Molly can't do that?
No, Molly did that.
Molly did that. So what else do you need?
So, so this is, it's, um, the Safe Bill is, is going to be the, the one that is having the problem here. I, correct
When I applied for the permit, I had to give him site drawings, scale drawings of everything inside, even though I'm making no changes. And then a second go around was, they wanted a plan for each and every bill, or room in the building, what I was replacing. So it was just kind of like new wall, new floor, new ceiling, insulation. New wall, new floor, new ceiling, insulation. It, it seemed like a lot of work as though it was being treated as a commercial building. Because I know, I've done stuff back in Mount Pleasant, which is where our primary residence is. And if I ask for a building permit, I go in, talk to somebody, I have it the same day, I start working.
I know, right.
But this has been, got to have been looking at this since probably February or March, but really hard since June. And I can't get anything. So I'm afraid to work on the building and get caught doing something.
Yeah.
Well, now I have a permit. It's not the permit I want. Permit so I can do stuff in there without somebody doing me a stop.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just, I can't possibly meet the inspections because one of the things he mentioned was I'd have to have fire suppression on the second floor because the first floor is commercial. Well, I don't want to do that.
Right.
And I have all the wiring and conduit. I don't really want to do that.
So who are you saying, Zach is holding them up to state?
No.
Safe Bill.
Built.
Safe Bill.
It's our contractor.
Two inspectors.
Safe call, they're doing the building permits.
Mr. Ball, can you, can you jog my, I think I forwarded your email
Yes.
to Safe Bill
Yes.
giving them my zoning's blessing, that we had no issue with it. That's, if I recall.
I sent something back to you and you said, you've done everything you can do. And I, I can't get it, get Safe Bill to budge. He says that's what it is. He can't do anything until it's been rezoned. And I
Rezoned? Molly
Yeah.
No, Molly already said it was residential.
Molly, yeah.
It sounds like the, the building inspector is mixing up zoning and, and the assessment of the property, which it sounds like Molly has taken care of. This is me just thinking out loud. We don't really handle building permits. So, you know, I don't have too much insight, but I'm wondering if maybe there's aspects of the building that are like deemed commercial. It's not built like a single-family dwelling. I feel like, um, maybe the, the building inspector could provide more of an explanation as to why a commercial building permit is required if you're showing him that the property is assessed as residential. And it's, is it even zoned residential?
I included, he was asking, he gave me that, no, the building is still commercial.
Yeah, wouldn't, wouldn't it be incumbent on him to explain why he's making that decision?
Because that's the only thing that comes to mind for me is that if there's certain specifications of the building that would have to be treated as commercial because it was built like a commercial building. But other than that
It looks like a storefront.
Right, other than that, like building codes, you know, like certain building codes that fit to that building. But if, if that's not the explanation, if the assessment of the property in the zoning district is the explanation, then that wouldn't necessarily be valid, it sounds like.
I think, I think the whole problem is that it has not been changed in the system. Because the system
Which system is that?
It still is listed as commercial improved. It has to be changed in the system for them to, to stop doing that.
Who can do that? Who can do that?
Who the heck changed?
Is that the LIA, the LIAA?
This is the county tax rolls. If you look it up, it still says commercial improved. So Molly needs to change it in the system. And that will clear up things for him.
Okay.
It takes a long time sometimes, I know.
Yeah, they like to drag their feet on stuff.
There's slow, there's slow changing things.
So you're saying, saying that the county, okay.
Yeah.
Equalization destroys
It, it's, it's in the equalization department that it needs to be changed. So, and Molly should be the one doing that. So there's no reason why.
So is that, no, Burke or Zach were?
That's Molly.
Molly.
That's Molly.
That has to change it.
I'll still make that call in the morning.
Yeah, Zach could make that call to Molly and she could make the changes and you should be all set.
Contact Safe Bill and say, can you take a look at this again?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll get back to you.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, wait until Zach gets back to you.
Yeah. And give it about a couple, three months.
A couple, three.
I know. Yeah, that, that doesn't make sense.
Anyone else? Public comment?
No. Oh, yeah.
Staff reports?
Staff reports?
Um
No staff reports?
I feel like I've had one. When was the last time we talked?
We've been talking on
I guess, I guess I have none. Um, we'll start working on, on the, on the view shed stuff. We'll present it to you guys. And, and that's kind of a question Katie and I were, were having on the side, is, is that language? You know, I'm, I'll take it, I'll speak with the city attorney on it to make sure that he's okay with it too. Um, and we'll set that up. I hope everyone had a great holiday. It was a nice break for me. That's all I've got.
All right. Roger?
Yes, maybe we should get this building inspector at one of our meetings. And maybe we're having an issue with him, that this individual is dealing with or somebody. He said he's got two of them already?
There's been, there's been two.
Changing them or?
Yep.
Uh, is that a thought or can we do that or something?
Sure we can. It's going to be at the next work session for city council.
He is?
Safe Bill.
Oh, is that their company, Safe Bill?
Yes.
And because he's had two people now, do they have different people check on them? Or do they just quit and then new hire?
They've changed people.
They changed, they changed personnel.
Oh.
But we're, it's going to be brought up at the next work council.
Oh, does that
Pardon? I believe so, yes.
Neighbors are having an issue with them also.
Question.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we'll get that straightened out. Well, where would you then, Zach, go for a building permit? If I wanted to put building, but where would I go?
I'd get you in touch with Safe Bill.
You'd get me in touch with
That may be, um, that may be a good question to ask if you guys are going to have a work session with the building department. Because, I mean, I'm, I'm curious now too, you know, it's like posing that question that is there aspects to a building that would deem it needing a commercial permit just how it's built? Or is it simply based off of the assessment rule?
I think, I think what they're doing is just looking
At the assessment rule?
At the equalization rules. And it says, and it still says, it just has not been changed.
Right.
And you know, now that you say that, I know that county equalization just had some changes in staff. And that might explain it, that it all, all the dots are connecting now.
Yeah, see.
But maybe that's, maybe that's why it just hasn't caught up yet.
Yeah.
But they are notoriously slow for changing, even, even the ownership, they're notoriously slow for changing.
Very slow. It's been up to a year to achieve.
Yeah, tax, tax rules. So when they try to get it done, they have it done by, but
I've given them corrected property descriptions before. Two years later, I still see the old one.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah, no, I'm good, Mark. Thank you.
I'll call in some favors and try and get that pushed, pushed ahead.
Sure.
Marlene?
It should be if it was supposed to be.
No comments. I had a wonderful holiday. I had the cold and I'm, I'm back feeling hungry and ready to
There you go, just normal. Okay, good. Shelley?
I'm thankful the holidays are over. I had a really nice time.
Pam?
I'm good.
Nick?
I think for me, things are going good. Uh, Zach, I forgot to get those numbers for you that we talked about.
It's okay, we figured it out. Thank you, though.
Okay, one less thing I got to worry about. I'm getting too many calls for surveys now.
Those ones pay, so I take those first.
Other than that, I think everything's going good.
Um, okay. Anything, Fifth Street?
I'm sorry?
The Fifth Street issue that I mentioned to you?
Oh, the, with the automotive repair?
Yep.
Yep, it's, it's been a long week. But it is, Fridays, I usually get a lot done because after these meetings, my schedule opens back up. So I am going to be in contact with him
Okay.
On that. I've got a few, I've got on my list a few other things, requests that I've received from you guys, so.
That's all I have. Thank you to staff.